I'd like to call to order the May 11th meeting of the Shelby Township Planning Commission. That is, Secretary, would you call the roll?
Mr. Dallo.
Here.
Mr. DeSico.
Here.
Ms. Cassali, absent. Mr. Bernardi, absent. Mr. Turner.
Here.
Mr. Appone.
Here.
Mr. Vier, absent. Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Next is approval of the agenda, if there are no amendments.
So moved.
Moved by Turner, support by DeSico. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next, approval of the minutes from the April 27th meeting?
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any amendments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, this evening with four site plans and a couple of other housekeeping issues. The first, site plan number 15-10, John Oro, United Rest Front Group. That's the petitioner here, I see. If you want to come up, if I can get your name and address and sign into, please.
Good evening, Tim Ponton, 12285 23 Mile Road.
Okay, was your request of us this evening?
We request site plan approval for a site located at 12285 23 Mile Road. The site is located along the northern side of 23 Mile, just east of M53. It's located at the corner of Nappy Drive and 23 Mile Road. Just north of the site is the existing Walmart Supercenter, along with the National Asphalt Products Development. Nappy Drive actually dead ends, it's not a through street, it dead ends in the asphalt plan driveway. To the west of our site is an existing Tim Hortons and White Castle development that is located in what's called the 2353 Plaza. We are seeking site plan approval for the third and final piece of that development tonight. And the development plan is for a 2940 square foot fast food restaurant with 33 parking spaces and six queuing vehicles for the drive-through. The drive-through is isolated from the two-way circulation throughout the site. The building is located along the same building line as the remainder of the development. And we have three light poles that we proposed, zero spillover onto the adjacent properties, along with six street trees along Nappy Drive, four street trees along 23 Mile, three other street trees throughout the site, along with over 90 shrubs planted within the development. We're here to answer any questions, if you have any questions.
Did you bring a copy of the elevation? Why don't you put it up? Okay, to the board, any questions of the petitioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Turner.
Mr. Pata, is this elevation the standard elevation that you're going with now with your restaurants?
There's a number of different elevations that Hardee's is using throughout the United States. We actually proposed initially a lot more EFIS. We did meet with the Planning and Zoning Department, and it was a request that we propose masonry and brick all the way up to the canopy line. So we did make that revision overall. So this does have a lot more of the masonry block that was typically proposed.
You have a notation in your box there on the left that says, "thin brick." How does that differ from thick brick? Is the thin brick panel brick instead of face brick?
I believe so, yes.
Mr. Chairman, if Mr. Win were here, I'd like to ask a question. Are we getting more relaxed on our application of brick where we can go with a panel instead of the face brick? Because I thought we used to be very restrictive, and we want real brick, not the thin brick. I don't know how we can answer that without Mr. Win here, but I saw that, and I wondered if we're using too much of the panel brick instead of the face brick.
Would you object to switching that from a panel to the face brick?
I don't think that we would object from that. I think that just, over the years, studies have proved that from a durability and a structural standpoint, that there's not many advantages or disadvantages from one compared to the other. So I don't think we would object to that if the board found that it was absolutely necessary to make that change.
That was one of my questions, was the durability, because I've seen the panel brick, and it doesn't seem to hold up as well as the real brick does. It's really a fake brick, right?
Yeah, it's a facade. And I think that may or may not be, you know, some installation issues, or, you know, from my experience, I haven't seen one hold up better or worse than the other. I can assure you that the developer and the operator is two in the same at this site, and I don't think that he would want, overall, to jeopardize, you know, his building at the same time. So I'll definitely run that by him, and...
Mr. Turner, a brief review of the ordinance references the durability of the brick, but doesn't specify whether it's a panel or face brick, and it does appear to give discretion to this body, is what you would prefer, so...
Okay, then that answers a question. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Now, has Mr. Win shared with you the engineering and other township board comments regarding the site plan?
Yes, we were in receipt of a letter from the Planning and Zoning Department, along with the consulting engineer, and I don't think that we either revised the plans to meet all eight of the requests from the Planning and Zoning Department, and we're good with all the engineering comments as well.
Okay. All right, if there's no other questions, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Turner.
I move to approve the site plan for John Oro, site plan number 15-10, subject to the submission of a revised plan addressing all department comments. Support.
Moved by Turner, support by DeSico. Do you want to make a decision on, make some recommendation on the brick, or do you want to leave it to the discretion of the planner?
Well, if we're not, if it's not our discretion on the brick, as long as it...
Okay, I mean, we can specify, but, you know, the ordinance...
I'm assuming if Mr. Win has looked it over and gone through it, then if he's satisfied with it, I would be too. I just had that question for him.
Okay, fair enough. Okay, any questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner DeSico?
Yes.
Commissioner Dalu?
Yes.
Commissioner Bernardi?
I wasn't here for this.
Okay. Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Appone?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is site plan 15-16, special land use number five, and this is a public hearing, so I'll ask the secretary to read the notice as published.
Charter Township of Shelby, notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Planning Commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, Macomb County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of the following special land use. Applicant: Reverend Philip Christ, Lakeside Assembly of God Church, 46155, Shana Road, Shelby Township, Michigan, 48315. Proposed use: building additions and parking lot expansion. Location: 46155, Shana Road, west side of Shana Road, south of 21 Mile Road. Sidwell number 23-07-036-278-017. Legal description is as follows. Planning Commission will meet on Monday, May 11th, 2015, at 7:00 PM in the Shelby Municipal Building, 52700 Van Dyke, Shelby Township, Michigan, 5867267243, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the special land use application. The application for special land use in site plan may be examined at the Planning and Zoning Department in the municipal building, Monday through Friday, from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM. Written comments may be submitted to the Planning Commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act 110 of 2006 as amended. Shelby Township Commission, Planning Commission Jerome Moffett, Chair Raquel Moore, Secretary. This was published in the Shelby Utica News on April 22nd, 2015. There were 84 property owners, and two applicants were notified on April 23rd, 2015.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Dennewith, did the publication meet all legal requirements?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you. Happy to indicate that Mr. Win has successfully dodged the traffic on M53 and has joined us. Okay, Ms. Dennewith, could you explain the uses under the present zoning and if this request is appropriate to the district?
Mr. Chair, the current zoning is R1B, which is set forth under Article 9, Section 9.10 of the Shelby Township zoning ordinance. The request would be addressed under Section 13.13, special land use standards for churches, and the, according to the general view, standards set forth at 13.01 of the Shelby Township zoning ordinance, and yes, this is an appropriate request.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Moore, did we receive any correspondence on this request?
No, we did not, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. All right, the format for this evening's public hearing will be as follows. The petitioner or representative will give a presentation stating the reasons for their request. Commissioners may then ask questions of the petitioner. I'll then open the floor to the public for any questions or comments, and then I'll allow the petitioner to make any concluding remarks addressing whatever questions had arisen. At this time, the petitioner's here. If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm Dr. Philip Christ, the lead pastor of Lakeside Assembly of God. We're located at 46155, Shana Road, Shelby Township. I'm also a resident on 14099 Middlebury Drive, Shelby Township, as well. It's been our joy to serve this community for the last 35 years as a church, and we are here tonight seeking approval, site plan approval, for our building and parking lot expansion to serve our growing ministries for our children, youth, and adults. We hosted last week, Tuesday evening, a neighborhood meeting, discussing our plans, making that available to the neighborhood, and tonight I'm privileged to have with us in attendance Pete Snyder of Urban Land Consultants, our civil engineer, our architect Brett Prather of Architectural Innovations, to answer any of your questions.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'm Pete Snyder of Urban Land Consultants. Obviously, the existing church, it's located on 20 acres on the west side of Shana Road, approximately a half mile north of M59 or Hall Road. The existing church, the colors aren't coming out very well on that, but it's outlined here in this heavy dark. The property itself is zoned R1B, as was already stated. It has R1B, it's bordered by R1B on two sides to the south. It's a mixed use. This is part of the city of Utica, and across the street is R5. Basically, the church has found a need to expand. They're proposing three building additions, Area A, Area B, and Area C. Area A is on the front here in the orange. It's approximately a little bit over 9,000 square foot footprint, but it's a two-story addition. It's going to house a new choir practice room, new stage practice room, some offices, some new restrooms, and a future cafe and break room. Area B is in pink. It's a reworking of their main entryway. It also has some expanded restrooms. Again, that's a high-traffic area. And there's also room for a welcome center, sort of cafe area there. Area C is the new youth center there in green. The square footages, again, as I stated, it's a little bit over 9,000 square feet for Area A. With the second story added in, it's a little bit over 16, it's like 16,500 with the second story. B and C are both one-story additions, and Area B is a little bit over 4,000 square feet, and Area C is a little over 4,500 square feet. We are reworking the parking area and the pavement that's shown in the darker gray. It does show up pretty well on the overhead. The rest of the area, the later gray, the pavement will basically remain. We're keeping the main entrances. There'll be no changes out on Shana Road. We're keeping driveway access completely around the building, but we're reworking all the parking and pavement there nearest to the building. As to parking needs, the main use, the peak building use, is still going to be Sunday morning worship. These building additions really aren't meant to expand Sunday morning worship. They're more for, we'll call them non-concurrent uses, uses during the week, uses, you know, basically remodeling and making it look nicer, but it's not really meant to contribute to a larger Sunday morning. So really, there's no need to add parking spaces. When we relaid it out, though, we did pick up, I think, about six spaces. We went from 389 to 375, excuse me, 395. The architecture is really, really nice. This is a perspective view from the northeast, looking at Area A. The new, there's a new covered canopy, an Area A. The second one is what it's going to look like driving in off Shana Road in the main driveway. You see Area A there to the right, and the new Area B, the new covered entryway there to the left. With that, I'm certainly available for any questions. I know the architect, Brett Prather, is here as well to answer any questions you may have. So, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. To the board, any questions of the petitioner? Actually, I have one question. Are you having to, are you expanding the parking lot into the woods at all? One thing I couldn't tell.
Yeah.
How much of that?
The short answer is yes, but very slightly.
Okay.
There's a, the building ends here, and this existing road kind of cuts almost due south. We're expanding it out a little bit here, so...
Okay, so there was no wetlands you had to deal with?
No, we kept out of the wetlands.
Okay.
No wetland impact at all.
Board? Well, this might be too easy. Okay. Okay, thank you. This is the only public hearing the Planning Commission will hold on this special land use request. All remarks will be entered into the record for Township Board evaluation. We are a recommending body, and the Township Board will evaluate our recommendation, which is the legislative body. The Township Board will make the final decision on the special land use request. At this time, the floor is open, and welcome to any comments or questions anyone may have. I'll go once, go twice. Okay. Back, Mr. Win, your comments?
Mr. Chairman, very few comments. All the major concerns have been addressed. There is a, we will have to issue a modified tree permit as part of this process. They did provide a photometric plan, but we did not see the light fixture details. We want to see that. The building department's been working with the church and their architects for some time because there's some big building code issues, none of which involve the site plan. So they're working through those concurrently. There was a comment by the fire department about vertical clearance requirements for the canopy, DEQ water permits required. Almost all, I think, all the township engineers' comments have been addressed. Very clean, very competent submission, and have offered recommendations supporting the expansion.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. If there are any questions from the board, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Support by DeSico, support by Turner. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Our recommendation this evening must be based on the foundational standards, compatibility with adjacent land uses, consistent with and promote the intent and purpose of the special land use, compatibility with the natural environment, consistent with the capacities of public services and facilities affected by the proposed use, to protect the public health, safety, and welfare, and the adequacy of the public access to the site. This evening, we may recommend approval, disapprove of the request, or table it to evaluate the information further. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Moore.
I move to recommend approval of special land use application number 15-16, SLU-6, to permit the expansion of the existing church for the following reasons. The site has been used as a church for many years. Number two, the scale of the proposed additions does not significantly change the use of the site or increase its intensity. Number three, the proposed modifications will not adversely impact any abutting uses. Number four, the building additions will not increase the amount of traffic generated by this use. Number five, a revised site plan is required addressing any remaining department comments. And number six, a revised tree permit will be required for this project. Support.
Okay, moved by Moore, support by Appone. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Appone?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Dalu?
Yes.
Commissioner DeSico?
Yes.
Commissioner Bernardi?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next item is site plan 15-20, Vincento Vitale, Vincent Joe's Plaza. The petitioner's here. More, petitioner's representative?
Simon Morrow, representing Vincento Vitale, Vincent Joe's Fruit Market on 25 Mile Road and Van Dyke Road. I didn't prepare a rendition, but there are smaller, I think I submitted this, as the board have copies of this. Basically, what they want to do is they want to enclose some of that outdoors retail area where they store the shopping carts and whatnot. They want it from the wind and the rain and things of that nature, and leave the opening to where people can exit freely in and out of the building. And there's been the discussion with Mr. Wood, whether or not it needs to be fire suppressed or whatnot. There are exemptions, but we're working through that as far as building materials. But basically, it's a canopy. It's approximately 38 feet. There's two sections. The one section's about 38 feet in width, the other one's about 35 feet in width, and it goes all the way back to the building. At the shortest point, it's about 12 feet in width, and this is about 17. That's about 30 feet in there. It's, the whole thing is less than...
Go ahead.
2,000 square feet covered. And basically, they're just going to have their outdoors, you know, some of the little items, you know, watermelons and things of that nature during the wintertime, just to protect them from the wind and rain. So I'll be here to answer any questions that you may have. The colors will be nice and bright, you know, to do your shopping there, so...
Yeah, I wish, I wish, I wish my wife did less shopping. Mr. Win, your thoughts?
Yeah, I think it's a nice addition. What it effectively does is sort of define that outdoor merchandising area, which is part of the original approval. The only comments that we have are ones from the fire department and the building department. As Mr. Morrow indicated, there's some code issues after resolve. I would have no hesitation recommending approval, subject to resolution of those issues at the building and fire department level.
Okay, great. Any questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Turner.
Mr. Morrow, these transparent inserts you have, they're going to be rolled up when it's nice out and then rolled down?
Yes, exactly. Yes, that's the whole idea.
Okay, Mr. Win, I know what they're trying to do here, but, you know, these canopies look nice when they're first put up, but, you know, I've seen them over the years. They fade, they tear, they wear, and they look, they don't look very good. This was a rather large canopy, and I'm wondering if this, you know, what, we're running into durability issues with awnings like this or canopies like this?
I believe there's a provision in the zoning ordinance that mandates that they may need to be kept up, so they don't fall victim to that sort of situation. So if they did, we would have the authority to mandate them be removed or replaced.
Okay, because I'd hate to see something like that happen to this nice building, so...
Absolutely. I mean, it wouldn't happen under the current ownership, but you never know if it would in the future. But that was built on the ordinance for that reason.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Moore.
I move to approve the modified site plan for Vincent Joe's Plaza, number 15-20, subject to the compliance with comments from the building department and fire department.
Support.
Okay, moved by Moore, support by Turner. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Appone?
Yes.
Commissioner Dalu?
Yes.
Commissioner DeSico?
Yes.
Commissioner Bernardi?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. Good luck. Okay, next item is Aubrey's Pizza and Grill, site plan number 15-24. Petitioner here?
Evening. My name is Peter Stuhleire with Design House Architecture, representing Joe Ketchai, the owner of Aubrey's. I think we're here just requesting a facade modification, I believe, and doing some changes to the round-shaped former Ocean Breeze Restaurant.
Okay.
I'd like to answer any questions you have. Mr. Win?
Chairman, you can see in the diagram, the colored rendering, they showed a before and after. I'm going to get everybody's familiarity with this, and I thought it'd be useful there for the commission to sign off on this. It's kind of a modest update, but I think a nice, fresh look for the building, and nice to see that site reoccupied and having the outdoor space used. So I see nothing but positive outcome from this, these changes.
Okay. Yeah, I think you'd do very well here. Any questions for your petitioner? Hearing none, motion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Appone?
I would move to approve the modified site plan for Aubrey's Restaurant, number 15-24, as submitted.
Support.
Okay, moved by Appone, supported by Turner. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, Commissioner Appone?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Dalu?
Yes.
Commissioner DeSico?
Yes.
Commissioner Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. And if anything, if hopefully everything will go this smoothly during the township, so...
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Welcome. Okay, old business. Site plan number 14-40, William and Jennifer Betham. Mr. Win, why don't you, why don't you, because I think we left, when we left last, left this saga, you were going to go visit the site and review the plan and refer it back to us.
And I was able to do that with Mr. and Mrs. Betham, and let me again, give you an overview. They're requesting what was known as a Class A non-conforming use approval. Excuse me, the site is zoned heavy manufacturing, but the principal use is a single-family home. There are other outbuildings there on the site that are clearly somewhat non-residential in nature. The theory behind nonconformities is you have a site or a building that doesn't conform to the zoning requirements, and you, hopefully eventually, that use will go away and be replaced by a conforming use. The practicality of that is that isn't often the case, and nonconforming uses or buildings don't always grow feet and walk away. So we had to find some meaningful way to accommodate them and find ways to allow for expansion or continue to existence. The practical difficulty that we deal with most of the times is it's a residential use in a non-residential district, and the owners have trouble either getting mortgage, getting a mortgage loan, or getting insurance, because if the building burns down now, they couldn't rebuild it. So I think the concern we had the last time was that there are so many elements of the site that we needed to get our arms around them. So the applicant had put together a letter and said, "This is what we're prepared to do over this period of time." And I did go out there with them on the site and kind of reviewed it, and I think their review letter provides a meaningful opportunity to accomplish that. It may take, you know, some time, but I certainly think it's a step in the right direction. I don't think we'd want to put them in a position where they couldn't rebuild the house if by some accident or, you know, act of God it was destroyed by a fire or tornado. So I think this is the right opportunity in this case to offer them some relief through this approval process.
Okay. You know, as we discussed earlier today, is there a reasonable timeframe we can put on, you know, just kind of the backend? So just in case, you know, if, say, within six months, nine months, a year, if this stuff hasn't, you know, I don't want to leave us, if we approve this, then we're, we no longer have any, you know, power to address any of these other issues.
I think that's a fair restriction, and just to make sure we have benchmarks to check on what they want to do. I'm convinced that Mr. and Mrs. Betham are sincere and wanting to do it, just it's, it's a big site, and there's a lot to do there.
Yeah.
And I would feel comfortable doing that with, like we do at the zoning board of appeals, we grant an approval and then reference it back on a yearly basis and report back to the commission of the board and say, "Here's what progress we've made."
Yeah, I mean, they've put together, I think, pretty aggressive, and I don't doubt a sincere proposal. I guess what I would like maybe is like with, you know, a year from now, even a year to the day.
Yeah.
Is that we revisit this and review it, and then, you know, I'm hoping most of that stuff is, you know, done much sooner than that year, but at least that gives, because some of the, some of the stuff I get, it's going to take a while to sort of... some of the, some of the stuff I get, it's going to take a while to sort of unravel. But I think a year is reasonable, seeing as we've been talking about this also for about a half a year.
There has been some progress made.
Yeah.
Mr. Paul Janabat, actually the owner of the two semi-trailers, I've talked with him, and he has assured me that he will have them out no later than November first, if not sooner. So, you know what I mean? And slowly but surely, things have come along. And like the Quasid Hut building and everything, we'll have a fresh look, and, and just, everything's going to look good.
Okay.
I think in terms of, I think that's a fair way to do it. I think for my administrative purposes, I'd probably check in every three to four months just to see how we're doing. That way, you don't wait a whole year, because if something goes south for a little bit, it's easy to kind of put it aside. But I think if we're all sort of working on the same team, there's a good opportunity. And I'm, again, I'm convinced that we have a sincere applicant here that wants to do it.
And I'm not saying deviate from the letter that you submitted, but I'm just saying that by the end, by, within a year, we're going to take a look back and, and make sure that everything kind of got checked off.
Mr. Glenn's been very good working with us, so I'm confident that everybody's going to come out happy.
He's a sweetheart.
He is. So, that's good.
Okay. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Turner.
Mr. Betham, I can say that there has been progress made, because I mentioned the tires at the last meeting, and I noticed the tires are all gone in front of that one building.
Yes, sir.
So, they, they are showing a good faith effort, and I would not want to stand in the way of this, because I understand it is your home. And as Mr. Nguyen said, I wouldn't want to create hardship in case something were to happen, so. But I, I do agree, we need a, a date certain where we can get most of these, or all of these done. And I see you've started, so that, that's a good thing. Thanks.
Well, in all fairness, I, I've estimated no less than four thousand expense to fix the Quasid Hut issue and everything. And time, I need vacation time from work to do the work and stuff. Mr. Morrow, if you would be willing to give a year, most of this stuff I hope to have done by Thanksgiving. But a year from now would be more than sufficient.
Just a side note, I didn't see in your, I just have a question. Where those tires were in that building, are you planning on doing anything to that industrial building?
The only, the only purpose I have for those tires is-
No, the tires are gone.
Oh, the building.
Are you planning on doing anything to the building itself where the tires were?
Okay, the-
To improve it?
Yeah.
Well, it needs a paint job.
Yeah.
Bad. And, and, well, it's a metal roof. I need to, I would be, if you would, because I remember the last time we painted, it was ninety-three, was the last time that that gray coat was put on. And then the metal roof itself, and I remember that, was very expensive. If the board would be willing, if you want to incorporate the barn into this, if you would give me till July four of two thousand and sixteen, then by then I would have the funds to paint not only the building, but the roof.
Well, I was just wondering, because now the tires are gone, you see the building.
I know.
So, now the building needs to be improved.
Yes, I know.
We know.
One from another.
We really do want to beautify, because we really, if it's our home, it's been our home.
Right.
But we've only had it for less than a year.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, I, I think, I'm sorry, Mr. Turner.
Just have another question. You've been there twenty years, right? Basically, I noticed, needing to note, you said that. Has the property ever been zoned residential?
Not to my recollection.
Because I'm just curious how-
Pre-sixty-seven?
Pre-sixty-seven?
Mm-hmm.
That would explain it.
That's when you purchased the property, in the fifty-nine, I think.
Yeah. So, I mean, yeah, I mean, I believe we were there before it was zoned heavy manufacturing, if I'm not mistaken.
I think so. It may have been gone, even gone back further than that.
Because there used to be seven homes on that road.
As I say, two, twenty-two does not seem to be a very good, easy mix of residential route.
Oh, no, Mr. Holmes, they've sold out to the cement company, ZF. They sold, that's been probably ten years by now. The ice company, we sold them that house. And then, you know, where Oakland Plumbing used to be down on the corner-
Right.
You know what I mean? I went to school with that kid. That was a two-story house. You know what I mean?
Okay, that was a residential area at one time.
Even, even Safety King. My brother went to school with him. But I mean, you know what I mean? They turned it into a business and a commercial building, so like, all the homes are gone. The only ones left are Mr. Jimmy Jeffries and his, you know what I mean? The two Jeffries, so.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Us.
We've had a kind of a consistent philosophy in dealing with Twenty-Two Mile Road, because it's such a mixed, mixture of uses. And one of the former code enforcement officers suggested, you know, you can deal with this one site at a time. And your goal's always to bring sites up to as close to compliance as you can, to make them look visually more attractive, improve safety. And you see the new development along there. I think we've, we've achieved that. And this is, when they came, when Mr. and Mrs. Betham came to the counter, it's that one more site. You know, it's like, we're, we're making those improvements, and Twenty-Two Mile Road's becoming a nicer-looking road. So, this will be a nice contribution to that process.
To your, to your request to paint it by July fourth, I mean, as far, from, from my perspective, if you can take care of all these other things, which I think are more kind of the nuisance stuff, the porta-potties and all the other-
Yeah, yes.
-junky things that sort of in there, I think that's something that we can address when you're back before, a year from now, and, you know.
Don't make it harder. Don't make it harder on yourself. No, I want to. I mean, my heart is there. I want to make it look as pretty as I can.
I think, yeah.
A little bit of timeline for, you know what I mean, this bit of progress, and then we'll teeter-totter and go back and forth.
Yeah, we'll go back and revisit.
It's going to get to a point where we're going to talk to your wife on the side and see if there's any other honey do you think she wants us to throw?
Yeah, she's got a list, and she's, she's actually liking this time constraint thing. You know what I mean? It's another tool in her arsenal.
All right. Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Turner.
To approve the Class A nonconforming use application for William and Jennifer Betham at Five Thousand Twenty-Two Mile Road, based on the following findings. A single-family home has occupied this site for an extended period of time. Approval of the Class A nonconforming designation will provide the owners with an opportunity to obtain mortgage financing and homeowner insurance. The Class A designation would allow the applicant to rebuild this site if destroyed by fire or another natural disaster. Approval of the request would not prevent the site from being used for industrial purposes in the future. The continued use of this site for residential purposes will not adversely impact any abutting development. And would it be appropriate to say all improvements to be implemented by May of two thousand and sixteen?
A reference in their letter of January twenty-third.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good.
That way, we have a benchmark.
Okay, thank you.
Support.
Moved by Turner, support by Oppone. Any questions on the motion? None, I'll call the roll. Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Oppone?
Yes.
Commissioner Dalu?
Yes.
Commissioner DeSico?
Yes.
Commissioner Bernardi?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Good luck.
Ladies and gentlemen, board, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
Okay, next item is Planning Director's Report. Mr. Nguyen?
Two items, Mr. Chairman. One, the first is the administrative report. We approved twenty-nine signs last month, which is, I don't know if that's a record, but it's close. That's like almost a ten percent, maybe ten percent of our sign applications. We're turning them around usually a day or two. So, thank Julie for her efficiency. Seven temporary use permits as well. So, it's been a busy month for those activities you don't typically see on a regular basis. Also, related to that, we are noticing, if you notice, you're getting your agenda packages earlier. It's been our goal to turn them around so you get them on Monday, the week before the meeting. That, I hope that's helpful for everybody. The second item was the capital improvements program. This is, I think, the third time we presented this to you. It says the two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty-one capital improvement program. The capital improvement program is part of the budgeting tool that the township uses, and it, what it does is it, it separates capital assets from operating assets. And, and a capital asset is one that has a useful life of five years and a cost of usually at least ten thousand dollars. So, the question is maybe, why are we doing this? The Michigan Planning Enabling Act requires Planning Commission to have a role in that budget process. So, three years ago, we started getting involved and bringing this to the Planning Commission. However, you're only reviewing projects that have a land use impact related to future development. You're not going to be evaluating whether Parks and Recreation needs a new lawnmower. Those are things typically beyond the scope of our review, but we are helping coordinate that with financial management. So, the, the projects, typically the types of projects we're looking at, that are defined by the state act, are opening or widening or extending a street, acquisition or enlargement of any public square, park, or playground, or any other public open space. So, the, the, the projects that were listed for consideration have something to do with land use are listed on, on the table on one of those sheets. I forget, I think it's page three. There's two fire department projects, both related to relocating a building and building a new station, several road projects, the most notable being widening of Shana Road between Twenty-three and Twenty-Six Mile Road, some sidewalk programs where we fill in gaps in sidewalks on major roads, and several public works projects related to water mains. Just to note that those aren't extensions to facilitate new development. Those are really gaps in the system, where they loop the system and prove pressure for firefighting and, and overall system pressure purposes. And then two park projects. One is the McCollum Orchard Trail Park at Shelby Road in Twenty-Five, and continuation of the Stony to Metro Park Trail. So, I would, again, pretty much continuation of projects we reviewed last year. There's no conflict with our master plan. I anticipate there'll be more of a relationship between the capital projects, of capital improvement program in the future, as we had put together a new master plan. So, they'll be linked together. So, you begin to see some relationship more than you might see now. But again, we wanted, this is working with the budget process so much more efficiently. When the board rules with the budget, they deal with capital ahead of time, and then we deal with operating expenses, and it's a much smoother budget process for everybody. So, I'm available to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Turner.
Mr. Nguyen, the two items you have highlighted here date of two thousand fourteen. Are they done, or are they still to be completed?
I, I don't know. I was going to call and ask, and I had forgotten to do. That's why I highlighted them-
Right.
-and I didn't take them off, so.
Okay.
What happens is there's some carryover projects, and we didn't edit them down quite enough to see which, you know, some projects keep reappearing, and they didn't change the dates in their spreadsheet, so.
Okay.
I, I don't know the answer to that question.
Thank you.
Questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to recommend approval of the projects contained in the two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty-one capital improvement plan, as each of these projects are consistent with the master plan and other approved planning studies.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next business from the floor. Mr. Rendezo? So, you tripped me coming in here, just so I'd call on him.
Uh, commissioners, thank you for the invitation to announce Shelby Township's Memorial Day Ceremony, which is going to be held May twenty-fourth out here in front of the municipal building at our beautiful memorial site. It's at one-thirty on a Sunday, and I'll say a little bit about the ceremony. We're going to have, once again, as we've been for the last fifteen years, I think, Dr. Philip Christ with the Assembly of God Church, and their choir also will be singing their patriotic tunes. And we have, this year, we're going to have some wounded Vietnam veterans speaking about their lives during and after the war and after the hospitalization periods. And there's other people that are going to be, the dignitaries and scouts, and so we'd like to see you commissioners out there, too. And I appreciate your time, and I thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else wish to address this body? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Dalu?
Motion to adjourn this meeting.
Support.
Supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Your packets-